I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening, and I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. Can I get the real call, please? Chair Knight Warren here. Vice Chair Cunningham.
Here.
Carter American. Secretary Davis.
Here.
Trusty Demarty.
Here.
Trusty Catriss.
Here.
Trusty Wainbaum.
Here.
Before we proceed, I would like to say that there are times when words don't come easy, and this is one of those times. As we reflect on the recent school shooting in Parkville, Florida, I'd like to ask that we remember each and every person that has been touched by this tragedy. A school setting is where invaluable work is done, and that is the education of our children. For all concerned, let the days ahead be once filled with the hope and strength needed for renewal and healing. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, I'd like to call for approval of the agenda. We move to the meeting. Approval of the m-
So moved.
Before it's been moved and supported? Yes.
I'd like to note for the record that there's an item L added, parking lot improvements. And so we're approving a slightly changed agenda, which I fully support.
Okay. It's been duly noted that there is an item added, parking lot L, and that will be the change of the agenda. Right now, we're going to approve this agenda.
With L.
With L.
With the L, yep.
With the L, right. And it has been moved and supported. I'd like the approval of the minutes.
No, all in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any suggestions of the minutes? Changes? I just saw a typo with that one. I'll let you know what it is. Anything else? Anyone else have anything to say? We're going to go to citizen participation, the verbal communications, and that would be David Fitzpatrick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In my capacity as the president of WCCEA, I'll be brief. You'll get 10 minutes or so in a couple of minutes. But first of all, again, I said it last month, but I want to repeat now especially that the checks have been mailed out and have been received by many folks. I want to thank Sam Veltri and Bill Johnson, and their staffs for the way they handled the 3 percent case. I can't imagine, given the mess that the state sent down to every school district in the state, that it could have been handled in any more expeditious or professional a way. And I appreciate the efforts you guys put into, and your staffs put into, keeping the faculty and all the employees informed of what was going on. My only other comment as WCCA president is we're looking forward to negotiations beginning, and hopefully they'll be done expedition, as expeditiously as the 3 percent checks got sent out to the college's employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments? Hearing none. Written communications? Hearing none. Okay. Let's do it. We go through special reports, sabbatical report, and that's researching Emory Upton by Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Okay, so I'm back. Let me get this up. There we go. As I thought about what to tell you about the sabbatical, I put together a presentation, and then this afternoon I thought, wait, I want to start it differently. Because what I want to show you is something that actually happened a year after the sabbatical. I, of course, was on sabbatical in the fall of '14. The purpose of it was to take my dissertation manuscript and turn it into a book. A year later, in October of '15, when I was done teaching on Thursday afternoon, I climbed in my car and drove to DC and spent the weekend in DC so that I could go to the National Archives on Friday and Saturday morning and sift through their pictures, because the publisher wants pictures for books. And where the Civil War is concerned, you're dealing usually with Matthew Brady. He's a very famous Civil War photographer. Most Civil War photographs you see are either taken by Brady or by people who work for him, certainly not all. And in going through the Brady collection, and this is how it's stored, so you can see the paper they actually pasted that photograph on is, because of acidic problems, it's kind of worn away a bit. This is the actual photograph that Brady took of Ulysses S. Grant in June of 1864. It's a famous photograph that shows up in a lot of books. It was taken during the Battle of Cold Harbor in Virginia. That's a more, I cropped it and blew it up so you could see it. It's really kind of a famous photo. And I wasn't surprised to see this, because I knew it existed. What I was surprised to find, and this is for me the joy of history, is I came across this photograph, taken in March of 1865, 10 months later. I'd never seen this photograph, and so to blow it up a little bit, that's what it looks like. And so these are the photographs that Brady or his colleagues took, and what you can see here is the aging of a man in 10 months of, this is the most intense combat of the Civil War, the beginning of the Overland Campaign in May of 1864, up to the end of the Siege of Petersburg and the surrender at Applematics in April of '65. And I was just stunned by this photograph. And I sent it to the publisher, not expecting it to show up in the book, well, they put it in the book, and I'm really pleased. My friends who teach or write about the Civil War, they hadn't seen this photograph either. And this is what I love about history, is that I can touch history, and here I was touching the photographs that Matthew Brady or his colleagues took. Now, so that's not exactly about the sabbatical. I was on sabbatical for the fall semester to take my dissertation, which I defended in '96, and turn it into something that was publishable. Let me tell you a little bit about Upton's career, because although I know you've all read the books, but tell you a little bit about Upton's career and who he was, and then tell you what I did aside from just editing, which actually had an interesting development. Upton was born in 1839 in Batavia, New York. It's just east of Buffalo. Attended Oberlin for a year, entered West Point in 1856, five-year course of instruction at that time. He graduated in 1861, and he was present at every major battle in the Eastern Theater of the Civil War, save one. He was not a second bull run, but every other major battle, first bull run, Fredericksburg, Chansville, Gettysburg, you name it, he was at those battles in some capacity, either general's aide or an artillery battery commander or an infantry regimental commander. His most famous moment in the war, and if you read a good book on the Civil War, this is where you'll find him, is at the Battle of Spotsylvania on the 10th of May of 1864. By this time, the Civil War had come to look a lot like what World War I would look like. It's trench warfare, there's abit, there's log walls, the defense is superior to the attack. And here on the 10th of May, Upton's reinforced brigade, he's got about 2,000 men under his command, attacked the Confederate position on what's known as the Mule Shoe, and suffering almost no casualties, he got into the Mule Shoe and booted the Confederates out. The supporting attack, which was supposed to be by Gershon Mott, failed, and so Upton's out there, he's about a mile in front of the Union line by himself. The supporting attack failed, he ended up getting thrown out, so that's the retreat right there. And it's in that retreat that he suffered significant casualties. He continued on in the Eastern Theater until in September of 1864. He was badly wounded at the Third Battle of Winchester. He literally took a 12-pound solid iron cannonball in the butt, tore off a chunk of flesh. He went home to Batavia for a couple of months to recuperate. After recuperating, they send him out to the West, and in the context of the Civil War, the West is the theater between the Appalachian Mountains and the Mississippi River. He went out west, where he took command of a cavalry division, and as a part of Wilson's Raid, Wilson was the corps commander. Upton took part in Wilson's Raid in March and April of 1865. If you're not familiar with Wilson's Raid, think Sherman's March on Horseback. This is what that was. When the war was over, he served in numerous positions in the Reconstruction South. He married a woman named Emily Martin from Auburn, New York. More on that in a few minutes. She tragically died, probably of tuberculosis, barely two years after their being married. He went to West Point then in 1870 to be commandant of cadets, that is, in charge of the corps cadets, not the instruction so much. While there, he rewrote the Army's tactics for the artillery, for the infantry, for the cavalry, and it was the basis for the Army's tactics for the next 20 years. 1876, the commanding general of the Army, William Sherman, sent him on an around-the-world trip, beginning in San Francisco and to Japan, and I won't take you to every point he stopped, but literally around the world to inspect nations' armies to see what lessons could be learned for the United States Army. He returned and wrote extensively about that trip and about American military history. Based on that trip, he proposed some massive reforms to the American Army. Those reforms were taken up in a bill given to the United States Senate in 1878. The Senate rejected those reforms, and in 1881, he committed suicide. In his lifetime, none of his ideas were implemented, but after the debacle of the Spanish-American War, the Secretary of War, a gentleman named Elihu Root, was introduced to all that Upton wrote, and the so-called Root reforms of the early 1900s, which the Army still lives by in many ways, Upton was very important in influencing those reforms. So that's the guy. My point of the sabbatical, then, was to just simply take a dissertation and turn it into something that could be published. And what that meant was taking a classic graduate school dissertation that was way too verbose and cutting down the verbiage. The publisher wanted me to get down to 160,000 words. The dissertation, as it stood, was 174,000 words, and I had to incorporate new research, because in 20 years I'd done more research. And so I had to cut down the verbiage and get more research in and clean it all up, which I did, and that's not really exciting, and so you don't want to hear about that. In November of that sabbatical semester, I was getting nearly done on the third revision, what I hoped was the last revision, when I got an email from a fellow historian who was a Civil War historian, and he said, "Dave, have you seen Upton's letters in the Princeton University Library?" And I said, "Yeah, no, I haven't." There was a batch of 60-some letters that he had written to his wife. As a historian, it's tough to get a handle on marital relations, because usually married people live together. And I require the written word. And if you're living together, you're not writing letters to each other. You might keep a diary. Well, his wife, Emily, kept a diary. It was a really good diary up to the day she got married, and then it kind of disappeared. And, but I couldn't find any letters. Well, these letters exist because she was sick. And she spent the winter of 1868, '69, and then again the winter of 1869, 1870, in warm climates, in Key West and Nassau the first year, and in Nassau the second. And so there was this batch of letters I didn't know about, that as I'm winding this thing up, I find out about, which didn't please me. Because for number one, if there was anything there, it would mean rewriting at least a chapter. The second issue here, which you can see, and for those behind me who can't see, I'll show you this, second issue here is that, which is his handwriting for most of his life was nearly illegible, and I had to teach myself how to read his handwriting. So I got 60-some odd letters, and my friends sent them to me digitally on a disk. He took pictures of them. He sent me these letters, and I'm hoping to God there's nothing there. And so to help you understand what you're looking at, on the right-hand side there is the first page. On the left-hand side is the fourth page. So the way he wrote was he took an eight-by-10 piece of paper like this, page one, opened it up like a book, page two, page three, closed it, page four. So you're looking at page one on the right, page four on the left, and then page two on the left, page three on the right. It just so happens that this letter was the first one that I looked at. And again, I'm praying to God there's nothing here. Well, I won't make you read his handwriting. Let me just show you what's there. "My dear little wife, how is it that away from you I feel like lovemaking?" And I'm like, holy crap. Because this guy was allegedly a Puritan and a prude and humorless, and I found him not humorless, but I certainly didn't expect to see that in a letter to his wife. And then he goes on, it's a very romantic page and a half. And then he shifts gears right at the bottom of the second page down the left there. "This morning at 6 o'clock, I went out to see," and the blanks there are, those are words I can't make out. Looked and looked and looked, and "horse being furnished me for the something." And if you see, there's kind of a weird-looking S on the original letter. That's a double S, but it's the only thing I could make out in that word. "General LeBeuf received me yesterday." Well, who's General LeBeuf? I'm not familiar with a General LeBeuf in the American Army. He talks about a corps d'armée, that's a French term. So I looked up and found out that General LeBeuf was the commander of the French Army in 1868. Now, hm. Why is the commander of the French Army in the United States? What's the circumstance where Upton would have met him? So I started doing some digging. And I can't find that LeBeuf ever set foot in the United States. So now I'm really puzzled, until I come back to the date. Now, the blank line up there, all of his letters have the same format. That first line is where he wrote it. I can't make that out. If you can, let me know. August 3rd of 1868. And it's then that the light went on. This guy is writing this letter on his honeymoon. He's in France. He and his wife honeymooned in Italy and France because of the weather along the Mediterranean coastline, and it was thought that it would help her health. He's in France, and he apparently left her in some town in France and went for a few days to spend time with the French Army, leaving his sick wife alone during their honeymoon. And this was my introduction to the stack of letters that I've got. Now, damn it, I'm going to have to transcribe every one of these things, because this letter itself is just gold. It reveals a lot about that relationship and a lot about him that I had no idea. And they were gold. So this is part of what I spent my sabbatical doing, and you all have the rest of it. Any questions?
I have one, if I may. Not about Emory. This has been very interesting, and I really, I mean, I'm very impressed. I'm just interested, what made you want to write about Emory Upton?
I keep getting asked that question, and the sad answer to the question is, it's money.
All of the money.
It was about money. So I had decided to, West Point, the Army sent me to Michigan for two years to get my degree, go back to West Point to teach, had a master's degree. When I decided to leave the Army, I was in Germany at the time, and I contacted my dissertation chair, well, at the time, my advisor, and said, "Will they let me back in? Yes, they will, so I'm planning on coming back in." John Schei, that's his name, called me up one day, still in Germany. "Excuse me, have you thought about the dissertation topic?" And I said, "Well, not really." And he said, "Well, I know you want to do naval history," which I did. I'm fascinated by naval history. And I know you want to do something with naval history, but there's $5,000 sitting in a fund in the Clements Library to be used researching Emory Upton. And that's a lot of money for research. And he said, "You don't want to sell your soul for a topic that you're not interested in, but if you think there's a topic there and if you think you might be interested, that's worth considering." So when I came back to Michigan, I started looking at what had been written about Upton and became convinced that, A, it was a topic that needed to be redone, and B, that it was an interesting topic, that this guy was, I knew of him, I knew the veneer of Upton, but I dove deep into it, and he was this fascinating guy. So it really was about money is what got me there.
Okay, choice.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm happy, because I remember when you first embarked on doing your research, and you gave us that little snippet of your, what you had already written about Emory Upton, and it was really fascinating. But, and I know I have been kind of pestering, I don't know if I should use that word, but I will, about when were you going to do this presentation? And I am so happy, it sounds so fascinating what you've done, and I really appreciate you doing this.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And to be clear for the folks who may not know this, this sabbatical I was on was actually the second sabbatical the board granted me to work on Upton. The first sabbatical supported the research that I did that got plowed into the dissertation, but it also led to two journal articles being published. And then the second one, of course, led to the book, and I do appreciate the board's giving me those two sabbaticals. It would not have happened without it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for doing this. This is hard back to follow. We're going to the vendor diversity report. Vice President Hens.
I think that's an air.
Oh, is it?
It's Vice President Johnson. Are you going to? Ben Hunholz is going to.
Oh, all right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Ben Hunholz. I'm the director at overseas purchasing here at WCC, and tonight I'm going to go over our vendor diversity report for our most recently completed fiscal year, fiscal '17.
May I say something before you start?
Sure.
So, in the past, the board has seen Barbara Villenger. Barbara, are you here?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
One of the, you know, one of the great things that Bill does is that he gives people on his staff the opportunity to learn other people's jobs and to have an opportunity to work in those positions. So Barbara is now working in the area of budgeting.
And accounts payable.
And accounts payable. And Ben has assumed purchasing and other. So I just thought I'd give you a little intro as to why you're seeing Ben tonight, but we're very happy to see you, Ben. And good to see you too, Barbara, Ben, here.
I'm certainly thankful to have Barbara Walton Knowledge here at the college. I've asked her numerous questions since I took over the role a little less than a year ago, and it's been rewarding, it's been a great process. So vendor diversity, first, a little bit of background about our policy. So you can see, this is highlighted under our board policy, 6050, our purchasing policy. So the purchasing agent acting in the best interest of the college is required to use his or her best judgment to acquire goods less than $3,000. Essentially, that means that it doesn't have to go up for a bidder quote. Anything from $3,000 to $10,000, we are required to go out for, to get three bona fide quotes. And anything greater than $10,000 requires this actual sealed bid. Just a little bit of background about our policy. So this is our fiscal '17 non-construction purchases. Our construction purchases follow a little bit different dollar threshold, and we've excluded them from this report. But for fiscal '17, you can see a large portion of our spend falls into the blue piece, and that's consistent with prior years. That's kind of all of our purchases that are under $3,000, all of our purchases that are sole source items, all of our purchases that are recurring contracts, renewals, things of that nature. The green bar, or the green slice there is our P-card purchases. So that would be things that go on college P-cards for conferences, travels, small things, office supplies, things of that nature. And then the red piece is really what we're focusing on here tonight. Those are all the things that go out for bids or requests for quotes. So it makes up about 11%, or about 2 million of our total non-personnel spend for the year. Our vendor diversity database, first and foremost, comes at the request of the requisitioner. So if they have somebody that they'd like us to solicit to, that's who we'll go to first and foremost. But also, the purchasing department will check trade in commodity publications, will contact manufacturers that are authorized to distribute in Washtenaw County. Also, we'll have a lot of vendors that will just request to be put on our list, and any vendor that can, we'll reach out to them. When any bid that falls into their line of business comes up for bid, we'll reach out to them specifically. In addition to that, we work with a lot of consortium agreements. Our biggest one that we use is My Deal for State of Michigan contracts. We also have some other purchasing consortiums that are nationwide that we're members of. And then we also are members of the Michigan Minority Business Development Council. We'll talk a little more about that in a few slides. Recently, all vendors in our vendor database have been contacted to see if they're minority or woman-owned. We'll talk about that in a minute as well. So purchasing, our policy overall, we strive to give the requisitioner the exact item that they order at the lowest price. A lot of times we'll ask, is a substitute acceptable? A lot of times folks want what they want, and that's what we try to give them. The purchase order will be issued to the lowest responsible bidder. That means our quality, delivery, and service standards. Preferences given to local vendors where the price and the quality are equal, or where there's a definitive advantage. Most likely, this is service-related, so if somebody has to be here to plow snow, we wouldn't want somebody from Traverse City to be our snowplowers, things of that nature. And then, secondly, we'll go to, we'll give preference to vendors in the state of Michigan, given that's what's included in our Public Act 331, which governs our purchasing spend. This is our total spend, and you can see the trend over the last few years. Overall, it's pretty positive. So on total purchase order spend, so keep in mind, this keeps out, this does not include P-cards, but our total purchase order spend has slightly increased, and so has our percentage of those purchase orders that have gone to women and minority-owned vendors. We've gone from 9% of our total spend to 10, to 11%, meanwhile decreasing our other vendor spend about 1% for those same periods. Certainly a trend that's something that we work on every year, we're diligent about it, we go to trade shows, and whatever we can do to increase the number of minority and women-owned vendors that we have on campus and partners, we're trying everything we can. So some of the things that we do, or some of the, excuse me, some of the types of spend, as you can see here, catering, so that's Fabulous Foods, they're certainly a big campus partner for us. Also welding equipment, some technology needs, that's our SARS equipment, instructional supplies. A big one this year was our program evaluation for one of the grants that we do. But you can see, it really stretches across a lot of facets of the college that are served by women and minority-owned businesses. And then our activities to increase our vendor database. So as I said before, we are members of the Michigan Minority Business Development Council. In May, we'll be attending their annual procurement conference in Detroit. It's at Kobo Hall. And these purchasing summits, really what they are is, WCC goes as a buyer. Some folks are very limited in what they want to buy. "I'm just here to buy paper," or, you know, a certain supply. Washtenaw, we buy everything. So we kind of check the box where we buy everything. We set up a table, and then any interested vendor can come to us, give us their information. We add them into our vendor database, and then whatever service they're offering, when it comes time for us to go out to bid for those, we've increased our pool of women and minority-owned vendors. We also participated in the Small Business Association of Michigan Buyer Summit, which is sponsored by the state. Us, as long as, as well as EMU, U of M, Michigan State are all represented there. And then, as I said earlier, recently, we just completed updating our vendor status, reaching out to anybody that's done business with the college over the last five fiscal years, just to make sure that the information we have in our system is correct. The biggest challenge we have is, we request this information, but folks don't have to provide it if they want. So we give them another opportunity to self-identify, and we reached out to over 3,000 vendors over the last couple of years. This was a long process, a lot of follow-up emails, but we're happy to say, at this point, we consider it closed. We've kind of started trickling in, or stopped trickling in at the latter part of last year. So. And that concludes my presentation. I would love to take any questions, though anybody has.
Any questions? I do. I didn't see anything, a breakdown of the minority of women or males.
So we've, we've grouped them together, women and minority-owned. Of our vendors, though, I would say about three-quarters of the, the vendors in here are women-owned, and about a quarter of those are minority-owned. So of the, the number of vendors that make up that spend...
I see where you're looking at, okay. The report is a little bit different than what I've been used to, so that's why I'm asking.
Sure.
Of the three-quarters, do you know of what they were doing? You know, what was their, what they, they were allowed or granted a contract for?
So, so a lot of different things. The, the slide we had up there, so deaf and hearing impaired students, women-owned as Fabulous Foods, welding supplies, web services, website design, what are some other ones?
Construction?
Well, this, this presentation actually excluded construction. This was just general fund purchases. So those are our types of spend that, that would include all women and minorities.
Right, right, okay. I, I saw that, but like I said, it's a little bit different than what I've been used to seeing, so, okay.
Sure. Yes?
I've got two follow-up questions. First of all, these businesses have to self-identify if they're minority or women-owned. What percentage of the businesses in our database have self-identified?
A pretty small number. I don't have the exact number.
Do you have a estimate or approximate?
Overall, a couple of percent, if I had to guess.
Which then raises, goes to my second question. Of the all other vendor spend that we have, which is 89% of that $13 million number, some of those could be minority or women-owned, potentially. I don't know why they wouldn't self-identify.
Certainly.
But it's possible that there are some in that area that are of women-owned.
Certainly, so for all vendors, regardless if they spend 3,000 or 300,000, we do require a vendor information sheet to be put into our system. And on that vendor information sheet, we would ask, are you a woman-owned or a minority-owned business? If they check that box, we check it in our system to make sure that they're acknowledged. But, but to your point, no, they, they certainly don't have to acknowledge that. And I would think that it is a higher number than that. I think there's a lot of businesses that choose not to report that way. But I, I don't know, that would really be speculation.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a point.
Yes.
I know this has nothing to do with construction. Do we do the same kind of thing with our construction contracts?
We do. We do ask for that same information. They are a vendor, they are going to get paid. So yes, we do, we do, we do record that information if they're willing to provide it.
And those people that do constructions are here. They're on campus, they're visible, and I'm concerned about whether or not those companies that have a presence on campus have a propensity, a reputation for hiring minorities that are working here. I mean, I think it's important for our students to see, if our students are in the electrician department, that there's an electrician here who may be brown, working on campus. So I'm concerned that the construction and repairs and all those people that are working here visibly have a representation. And, and we would be able to see that and ask that question, what's your rate of minority hiring? And will we see that? Do we have any sense of that at all? Because I don't see brown people working here from outside unless they're planting bushes.
And so unfortunately, we don't have the legal right to ask what their hiring practices are. I mean, we have to make sure that we follow all of our state procurement guidelines. We certainly strongly encourage that, but we're going to follow the rules first and foremost.
So there's no way of encouraging that at all?
I would say if, if, if all, if two companies gave us the same bid and, and we looked at who was local and, you know, who had a good history with the college, we would be able to make that election based on our choice. But, but first and foremost, we're going to go with the lowest qualified bidder.
This is another, in recognition of the cultural shifts that we're seeing in employment arenas from the hashtag Me Too movement's presence right now in the media and in our, I mean, in front of us. Is there a way to get at asking our vendors if they have, have a sexual harassment policy on their books?
Not that I'm aware of.
Are you aware if there's any state law that would prevent us from asking that?
I think that, Nidya, I, I can say that. I think it's a really good question. I don't know the, the legal grounds for us not or being able to ask that, but I think it's worthy of us pursuing that.
I mean, if, if we ask it voluntarily to tell us if you've got that policy...
There, there, the state laws for, for qualified vendors, that they have to comply with kind of all the, the EEOC requirements.
Right.
And so you, so we have that assurance. To your question, Trustee Hatcher's question around their EEOC reporting and, and do we have a sense as to their strengths around compliance with end goals towards that, I think is worthy for us to, to further pursue that. Really do, so.
Thank you.
Good questions, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. From the action report, Vice President Veltre.
Good evening. Sam Veltre, Vice President of Human Resources. I'm pleased to provide the 2017 affirmative action report for the college. As the board knows, I've been here a little less than six months, and a significant portion of that time's been spent, you know, really trying to assess human resources as a department, including tho, those college initiatives that our department supports. And the principle to that is our efforts around affirmative action and diversity in the workplace. So what I'd like to do, in terms of our report tonight, is to provide for the board an overview of diversity trends from 2015 to 2017, to also give, to drill down a little bit and look at a demographic review of our faculty and staff, provide some highlights, brief conversation around our recruiting and selection process, and of course, share with you what our continued focus and our, our plan of action is going forward. So just as context backdrop here, the, the board does have, we've adopted a policy on affirmative action, and I've provided the major provisions here for our review. The college will seek and employ qualified personnel and provide equal opportunities during the employment process. The college will not discriminate based upon religion, race, color, national origin, age, sex, height, weight, disability, veteran status, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, and of course, any other protected status. And then finally, the college's employment of women and minority individuals shall be aligned with the employed population of Washtenaw County. So that's our express policy statement. So, providing a snapshot. So if we look at the college as a whole, here is our, our full-time composition. And you'll see, we've had little movement between 2015 and 2017 in terms of the number of full-time employees or full-time staff that we employ. We had 565 in 2015, and we've seen a, a small incremental bump up to 20, or of 20, up to 585 currently, or as of 2017. The makeup of our staff, when you look at minority representation, you'll see that we've been steady at around 25, 26%. And in terms of female, we've had the same very stable number of 58%. So drilling down, as I mentioned, a little bit further. So that's the high-level snapshot of the college. When we look at the demographic review and, and understand that the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission provides definitions around minorities and minority subgroups, you know, just trying to look at, you know, where, where we're represented, where we may be underutilized in terms of the various minority subgroups, you'll see, the blue bar represents the county. So that's the benchmark that we're measured against in terms of our affirmative action efforts. So for instance, for African-Americans, the current makeup of our workforce, we have 16% of our staff is made up of African-Americans. Native Americans, you'll see, you know, very small, less than a half percent. Asians, the benchmark, the county benchmark is 8%. We're currently at 4%. With regard to Hispanics, the county benchmark is 4%. The college is currently at 2%. And then finally, for those that identify with more than one minority subgroup, the benchmark is 1%. We're currently at 3%. Now, the other bar there that's, that's important, while we use the county as the, as the measuring stick, we also want to look at our student representation, our student body population. So that gold or yellow bar represents the, the makeup of our student body. So 15% of our, our student population is made up of African-Americans, again, about a half percent Native American, 5% Asian, 6% Hispanic, and then 5% who identify with more than one minority subgroup. Male, female review, again, you'll see that our numbers have been consistent during this review period. So the blue bar represents males, while the green bar represents females. And so in 2015, 58% of our workforce was made up of females, and really, the number holds true today. We have essentially the same makeup when you look at gender of our staff. In terms of highlights, so really just wanting to look at our accomplishments and, and some of the things that we're, we're making good progress. As I mentioned, our African-American and female staff representation outpaces the benchmark or the county demographic, as we talked about. 16% of our, our current staff is African-American, while the benchmark is 12%. And again, females, we're currently at 58%, and the demographic benchmark is 51%. Another thing is, as you peel back the workforce and look at things, you know, oftentimes folks, you know, make the mistake of, you know, assuming that affirmative action is just around the decision to hire somebody. But in terms of the law, in terms of affirmative action plans and programs, it's also about providing equal opportunities for folks, not only when they're here, when they, when we hire them, but as they stay with us. And do they have meaningful opportunities to continue to develop and, and get promotional opportunities? And something that's a really positive thing from my perspective, having first chance to look at these numbers, is that you'll see the percentage of minority promotions for incumbents has increased by 50% since 2015. So in, in 2015, about a quarter of our promotions were of, of those minority staff. And today, you'll see in 2017, more than one-third of our promotions were of minority employees. So that's, I, I think that's, that's a good, obviously, data point for us. The, the last bullet here, and I think it's consistent with what Trustee Hatcher talked about, one of the fundamental tenets of affirmative action is, you know, as we look at our students and their campus, their student experience here, and they consider a career perhaps at WCC or something like that, do they, can they picture themselves working here? And so when you look at the, I guess, the student life cycle and their experience on campus, some of our highest represented departments are those that are primary contact, direct contact with our, with our students. Recruitment and student enrollment is 40% minority, career services at 40%, counseling and career planning at 46%, our testing center at 50%, and, and finally, workforce development at 80%. So one, just backdrop, in terms of considerations, of course, I just highlighted some of, some of the, the good things. That's not to say that we don't have opportunities. Of course, we have opportunities, and we'll continue to, to work on, on making sure that we have a diverse workforce here. But one, one consideration, a couple considerations I would ask the board to consider is, and this is a positive thing, is that we have long tenure here. We have folks that apparently like working here, enjoy what they do, and they stay with us. So you'll see the numbers, you know, professional faculty, the average tenure is about 14 years. For our custodial maintenance, it's 13 years. For office professionals and technicals, 11 years. And finally, independent staff is nine years. Now, that's significant when you look at the average tenure in the United States, which is four years. So we've got, our professional faculty stay with us nearly three times what the, the average tenure is in the United States. So in the context of affirmative action, you know, one, one of the things, and you'll see that we've only had 20 additional full-time hires in three years, you know, there are limited opportunities to, to bring on full-time staff. So that, I mean, again, again, the fact that folks are loyal and want to stay here a long time is a good thing, but in the context of affirmative action and succession planning, it, it is something that we have to manage. In terms of the hiring process, and again, you know, education is not static. There are lots of employers, lots of industries where you can develop a long-term strategy around affirmative action, for instance, healthcare. You know you're always going to need registered nurses or physical therapists. With education, you know, the offerings that we provide and, and the staffing that we, we provide is, is really influenced by enrollment trends. And, you know, as we have people that are pursuing different careers and new careers, we have to be conscious of that as we staff and as we hire people, you know, in terms of occupational industries and, and not just general ed. So those are just some backdrop considerations for us in terms of our affirmative action planning. Continued focus, I mean, again, you know, we are going to continue to focus on the recruitment of diverse candidates. And again, this is basic blocking and tackling, fundamentals. When we, I think the board knows that we primarily rely on search committees when we make hiring decisions. And so as a threshold matter, we need to make sure that the people that are on our search committees, that that makeup of that group represents the diversity objectives that we have as a college. I mean, that's, that's, I think that's common sense and logic, but we need to make sure that we're deliberate about that, that the decision-makers, the people that are doing the interviews actually represent the diversity that we want to have as a college. Focus on value-added diversity training for search committees. We have a pretty robust program in place today, you know, implicit bias and some other things that will help provide a perspective for people as they consider interviewing and as they consider making decisions about people that we want to extend offers to and, and hire. It's important that they have that training around diversity. Emphasis on establishing relationships with historically black colleges and universities. We need to make sure that we're cultivating those kinds of relationships, that we're developing those relationships and leveraging those, not only in terms of, you know, graduating students, but for those colleges where they have alumni associations and they have workforce development, where they have alumni who reach out in terms of job searches. So just making sure that we're, we're reaching out to the right people and identifying people that can help us source candidates. And this final bullet is, is not losing sight of what we got going on here just in southeast Michigan and the state of Michigan. I, I know last year, we, from a budget perspective, dedicated some funds around the idea of trying to be, be more national in terms of our search and reaching out to national firms to help us in this regard. And, and I really think, you know, that we lost sight of trying to leverage local firms and, and focus on our efforts here in southeast Michigan and the state of Michigan. And so that's something that we're certainly going to emphasize moving forward. Questions?
Well, may I ask?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, I was jotting some, some things down, and actually, you went over them, and your continued focus area, when you... And your continued focus area, when you spoke about search committees and zeroing in on the efforts of making sure that they adhere to what we're looking for as a college in representing minorities and females. So, because my question was, you know, that I written down, like, what sort of marketing strategies are we implementing in our career hire process in seriously attracting the minority population beyond our boundaries here, Washtenaw and Michigan State boundary? Because there are a million talented people out here outside of African-Americans, Asians, and what have you, that don't know about Washtenaw Community College. They will, and very soon will, because of our driverless vehicles, but outside of that realm, given all what's been presented here, you know, the demographics in our area, in this particular area, that doesn't include Wayne County, because there's a higher minority population there, but because our students are more non-minorities here, and we're trying to get a full representation across the board as much as possible, how strongly are we getting the message across that we need to have more minority representation here? Even though you're looking at having or have been using search committees, how dedicated are they in making sure that we can get those, that they can get those people here to us? Because we have a lot to offer. I mean, we really do, outside of the aesthetics. You know, we get the weather, you know, you got the Four Seasons of the weather, you know, our pay is great, our benefits are great, you know, we have great people, you know, our students are awesome. Once they leave here to go to, you know, four-year universities that just do well for the nation and for the state and the local. But what are we doing to really make, get that message across that we've got to have a strong force in these other areas here that are, that are low? I mean, because we're looking at minority representation that hasn't changed much, but just one percent or so between the years of fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. And that doesn't, that doesn't look good. And I say this because I went to a HBCU. And with that experience, I worked at a university in West Virginia. And this woman stood in front of the seminar class, and she had the audacity to say to all the attendees that their, the research that she and her staff made to get more minority faculty into that institution where I was working, they couldn't find them. And I was, I was not in a position where I could stand up and say, you know what? That's not true. So I just sat back and I absorbed what she stated, which was totally false. There are minority, there are, you know, minority representation out here. We just have to get them here. We have to find them and get them here. We've got to put a freaking red bow on it. We got to get them here, because we've got to show that our students are going to prosper more when they see somebody that looks like me. And that's very true. So I know it's a long-winded question and comments or whatever, but I wanted to get this out, because we're at a position now where we're on an upswing, and the STEM field, you know, is on the upswing, and we've got to have more women in there, we've got to have more, you know, African-Americans in there, we've got to have all these other groups that's in, that falls in the minority in that, in that area and other areas outside of the STEM group.
Yeah. Well, certainly, I agree, you know, and again, so in the short period of time that I've been here, and you see that I've highlighted some of the basic fundamental things that we need to do as a college, you know, I will say first and foremost, we want to have a diverse workforce, not because we might be legally required to, but as part of our culture and part of what we're doing as a college, it's important to us. And, you know, there are pockets of that going on right now. In fact, I was talking with BPI Hearns, you know, you look at our nursing program as an example where we've made some progress. We've made a couple of recent hires, and the fact of the matter is, we've been very deliberate and intentional about our sourcing and our approach to the recruitment in that area, and it has paid dividends for us. So, you know, you won't find us saying that we can't find candidates. We're going to do what we need to, to identify candidates and provide the opportunities here. And, you know, for me, you know, I'm going to continue to work with the Vice President of Instruction and the deans on the faculty side to make sure we're doing what we can. And of course, not only on the faculty side, but the staff side, to make sure, as you said, that, you know, our staff is representative of the diversity objectives that we want to reach.
Thank you.
So.
Because I, you know, and I'm, I understand what Trustee Hatcher has always been saying since I've been elected here to the board. She's always asked about faculty, minority faculty. Well, that is so important. It is so important, and it makes a big difference. When I attended Eastern, you know, I've had an economic course, and it was great to see an African-American male there. That's why I say, I know they're out there. We've got to have them here. It's like almost, it is imperative, because we've got to, even this playing field is too, is too out of balance. And our students, they look, there's a lot of things students see. They may not at all say it, you know, voice it on whatever little surveys that, you know, that are passed out or just through communication, but they see a lot, and they take it with them. And that's the information that we need to capture to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
That's my story.
Yes.
I have a bunch of questions. My first question is, how many searches are going on right now? Faculty, administrative?
I think at the moment, we probably have ten to fifteen full-time opportunities that we're actively searching for across the campus.
I'm also kind of struck by the discrepancy in the number of Hispanics in terms of our students and in terms of our employees. It seems to me that's an underrepresented group as well.
Yes.
That we need to pay attention to. When you do the 2017 affirmative action highlights, those are positive, but if you look at the faculty at twenty-one percent and the custodial at thirty-six percent, I think you understand what she's talking about.
Yes.
What our students see. And I think Eastern and U of M are great places to do. I mean, I can't imagine, I've been reading, who wants to go into K-12 these days?
Right.
And a lot of our faculty originally came from K-12. It's a very rich source in education schools, because they don't want to go to nine to twelve, because it's a nightmare. And this is a much better environment for people who really want to teach, rather than target practice or whatever. So, I mean, I would recommend that to go to ed schools, where you've got young people who want to teach, but maybe don't want to teach public K-12.
Sure.
And we can accommodate them with our faculty contract in terms of getting a master's degree to be able to continue to teach here, even if they don't have a master's degree. I noticed that we're doing pretty well at part-timers in terms of minorities. We should be encouraging them to get whatever certification they need to be promoted in terms of part-timers. I also am looking at the, what is it, the underrepresented departments in the bigger report, and I'm just curious, in terms of priorities, I know we save a lot of money by not hiring people, I understand, but if we found a dynamite African-American man in humanities, even though there's no position open, what would Dollar Bill say about that? You see what I'm saying? In terms of priorities? You know, we can identify good minority candidates, but if there's no position open, they'll say goodbye, we'll go someplace else. So I'm wondering about that in terms of a priority for affirmative action hiring, or if we find someone. I mean, I noticed that it's, half of those areas are in instruction and half of them are in administration. So I'm just wondering, how prepared are we to put money into a position, even though there's no opening, in order to, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're.
Oh, good, thank you. I'm so glad somebody did.
We all do.
Oh, good.
Well, certainly, Trustee Hatcher, forgive me.
Ruth is fine.
You know, I guess I hadn't contemplated your question, but I can tell you that, as I mentioned, so the, one of the challenges we have is that you'll see our professional faculty again with fourteen years of tenure. There are limited opportunities. So you're right, when we have opportunities for succession planning, we have to make sure that we're in a position to take advantage of that. And part of that is, you know, as far as growing our own, you know, the promotion, that same concept, as we bring part-time faculty on, you know, are they in a position to elevate to a full-time position when we have an opportunity? I mean, if we got people, you know, here that have some knowledge around the campus, they would seem to be a logical, that would seem to be a place where fertile ground for opportunities.
Do we still have the contractual language about the five years to get your master's degree? So, I mean, there's an opportunity there. And I also don't want to pass up the opportunity, congratulate nursing. I never thought it would happen.
Yes.
You did good, because nursing has been one of those underrepresented areas for a very long time, and that was very, probably, important work for nursing. I just wonder what the priority is in terms of identifying a qualified person for that page. And I don't know that we have an answer yet, but maybe someday.
Well, I want to just throw, in my two cents, seeing how Trustee Hatcher brought up on the areas that are deficit, I, I'm not going to say much, not like I usually do, but I will just limit my remarks, is that I'm not surprised by seeing the deficits, particularly some of the areas of departments that this has been historical. And I would like to, hopefully, in the future, and I'd like some of what Trustee Hatcher has mentioned, that we look at, taking, looking at the part-time people and trying to bring them along, because they're already here, and we know what their work is like, we know who they are. So why can't we try to advance them as much as possible who's already here, if they're willing? But I think a lot of them would be willing, and they're already in a position that they know what's going on, and possibly that, when that opportunity happens, they can start applying for those positions, and we can help them along with that. And this goes back to what Trustee Hatcher has mentioned before, how possibly we could, you know, be mentors to some of the minority students out here, and where we could be mentors to them and get them to come into our school system here and know that this is a safe place, it's a place for them to come and learn and not be feeling that they can't come. But the more that we have diversification on this campus, I think, at one time, when I first started here at the school, and I'm going back a long, long time ago, it was so diverse, I mean, you couldn't go into a class without seeing diversity everywhere. It was across the board. And through the years, it's just been dropping down. And I think at this point in time, we really need to start looking at how we can start building that back up again.
Thank you. Yes.
I have one more request. In the big document that we got this morning, I think it would be helpful for me if you could highlight how many, the number of employees in each job category. So when I look at the percentages, I know what I'm looking at.
Okay.
If I'm doing twenty percent of three, well, that's something different.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would help.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
I've got one question on the PowerPoint, and then a couple of questions on the more in-depth report.
Dave, could I ask you to tell, say where you're at on that?
Okay, on the PowerPoint, on this one page, the last page, Continued Focus, where you're talking about relationships with historically black colleges, what kind of relationships are you talking about?
Well, as I talked about, making sure that we're communicating openings to those colleges, reaching out to their alumni associations, making sure to what extent they have job placement services for their alumni, that we're identifying that we have an interest in having, being a pipeline for opportunities.
So if we have a faculty position in math open, we reach out to the historically black colleges as one of our?
Yes.
And do we have established relationships now with those colleges?
Not where we'd like to be.
I thought at one time we had been.
That's what we're working.
Right, I understand that, and I see it on there as a bullet point, which I like, but I just wanted to get a little more detail on.
Sure.
Where we are with that. And then, as I'm looking at these numbers, which we just received, and I haven't looked deeply at in the deeper report.
Yes.
Are adjuncts counted as part-time or full-time?
Full-time.
So even though an adjunct is really part-time, they're in our numbers, in our data, as full-time employees.
Yes.
And that would be on the PowerPoint as well?
Yes.
Okay, and then, I guess I need to look at this, but these red, I guess, the comparative analysis, where you've got these red ones where we're below twenty percent, mathematics and various other areas, are we, do we have data like that on the part-timers that breaks it out by department?
Not to that level, not for part-time.
Could we? How hard would that be?
But what it.
We have a bulk part-time.
To be quite honest with this, really honest, with this system we have in place right now, it would be a challenge, but we certainly will make sure, and that's what we're working on, is to improve the system that you're just requesting. Would you agree?
And it's all fluid.
It is fluid, that's true.
I know it changes semester to semester.
It would be good to see, we can give you a snapshot, but, you know.
My question.
I know that, in the past, I've seen, when we have full-time positions come open, frequently they're, come from adjunct faculty. And when adjunct positions come available, frequently, part-timers fill those, but I know you advertise it more broadly than that. But it seems like the first line of recruitment is our part-time faculty. So if we have established part-time faculty who are here and doing a good job, and something comes open, an opportunity for them comes open to either step up to an adjunct or for an adjunct to step to a full-time position, that's.
That is one of the big pools. I mean, part of the diversity that took place in the nursing department, that last hire did come from our part-time pool.
Right.
So that does very consistently happen.
So that's why I'm wanting to drill down to that diversity among the part-time pool, is I recognize that that's one of the most fertile areas for us to draw from, for the adjuncts and full-time.
Well, and again, as I mentioned earlier, that's why I want to make sure that we're not, in our efforts to try to broaden our scope of our recruiting, that we're not losing sight of what we have here locally and right here, you know, before we start doing that, because we have opportunities right here that we need to make sure we're leveraging.
Yes, I'm sorry. On these pages eleven and twelve, it shows part-time faculty at sixteen hundred and forty-three. So is that per year, or, that's kind of weird. I don't know what that means.
Are we looking at the?
The big book. Page eleven.
Sixteen seventy-six is what it says.
What's this, part-time faculty, total employees?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
1,600-some.
For 17.
And then, someplace else, it's only 500-somethings. But is that a yearly number or... Got to be. I mean, it's sort of...
Because it's got a little 500-ish.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I see.
The expert going.
1,676.
Great. So I had an...oh! And as you're going to historically black colleges, don't forget to go to the Bath Ed program at Eastern and U of M and Cleary and...
Yeah.
And, you know, the Oakland. Because those people are preparing to teach. And it's a much nicer place to teach here than in some other places. Okay, sorry.
Now, I wanted to say, just real quick, and I know we're beating this horse. Actually, because you just brought up just now, what I was going to say is when you go into these institutions, it would be recommended to have a recruiter who is a minority. And I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay.
I mean, I have no problem as a student, I would see you show up. But I would be more apt to respond to Vice President Hearns when I see her show up. You understand? And I think that's very important, to keep that in mind. So I don't know what, who is in the recruiting pool here at the college. But keep that in mind when... Or if it's our national search company that's actually going out recruiting. Make sure they fit. If they got a minority, recruiting minorities, whether they're African-Americans, Hispanics, American Indian, or whomever, just to let you know. Because the response will be a lot more favorable. And it's more cultural
Okay.
in terms of favor, that way.
My feelings are hurt, but I won't take the question.
I understand. You'll be all right, but just to let you know.
Any other questions? Hi, I thank you. This was a very good discussion on this. And I'm hoping you're able to compile what we were saying and request. And I think it can work out. So we can start seeing some more favorable numbers than... Especially for me.
So I just want to make it clear, because I like to respond. And I always respond to what the board requests.
Go ahead.
One of the requests from Trustee DeVarty, I'm not sure if we even have the software or the capability. But this is what we're working on.
Right.
So usually, I try to get it to you by the next meeting or something. I don't...all I can say is we're working on that. I just want to be really upfront on that kind of stuff because I don't want you to think I didn't follow up. All right?
Right, sure. That's understandable.
If we can help, let us know.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you all. We're going down to monthly reports, personal recommendations. Vice President Belltry. Any...that's tab B. Anything you want to say or just this...
No, there's no noteworthy or high-profile positions.
Okay. All right.
Well, they're all noteworthy, of course.
Yeah, sure. Sure.
But just...
Yes.
Is that 1,440 the starting hourly for our custodians?
For part-time, that's the rate.
For part-time. What's full-time? Do you know? Or is it higher than that or same?
Yes. I want to say, I believe around $18.
Okay.
That's about right.
I move we accept the personal recommendations or the personnel recommendations.
Second?
Second.
They moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go to tab C, financial reports. Vice President Johnson.
Great, thank you. The report for January, it mirrors prior months that the college continues to perform well. Revenue up about $1,005,000, of which tuition and fee revenue is up about $700,000 year-to-date. And property tax is up a half a million with that. And then, our trade partnerships up a little bit as well. And that's really related to the volume of activity that we're doing with our UA and ironworkers partners. So strong on the revenue side and on the cost side. We are below budget about $1.9 million. And that's split about evenly between personnel and non-personnel. We continue to trend with more vacancies than what we had assumed. We had assumed around 20 vacancies on average and we're averaging a little north of 30 vacancies. And there's a lot of churn that goes on within that. It's not a stagnant pool. And then, on the non-personnel side, it's really across the college. We think that a fair amount of that is timing in nature. We're getting to that point in the academic year where each of the departments will be looking closely at their budgets and putting through kind of their last wave of purchases, both as it relates to current year operations and really just kind of set up for next year as well. So that's kind of a normal trend that we would see. So we would think that a portion of that non-personnel cost would be timing in nature. And then you'll see a positive variance on the health and fitness center. We feel confident that the amount of surplus that's been generated over the years, that we are able to kind of pull that back into the general fund of the college to help to support the deferred maintenance activities that are going on at the college. So they're above $3.7 million a year-to-date, the finance side. And just to draw the board's attention to deferred maintenance, which is page four in your report. We have, of the total, $12.3 million cumulatively that's been funded into the deferred maintenance. About $9.1 million is related to completed projects. And about $3 million are projects that are in progress, of which that leaves just a balance of $140,000. The board might recall, a couple of years ago, we would carry a bit more surplus there. But it just, it goes to show that the demand, that the deferred maintenance projects and the demand for that funding is well-aligned and just in time to meet the needs on the deferred maintenance side.
Okay. Here and then. David? Any question?
Nope.
I do have a question.
Just with the vacancy in the IT department, is that going to be filled or remain vacant?
We have a vacancy. It's a director, a director position. We had one of our directors who had left. And we've chosen to reorganize that area for operational and for strategic reasons. And so that savings, in part, helps us to fund a request that we have be for the board moving forward for a contracted technology services contract. It's one of the vacancies that helps to fund this new contract for us.
Okay. This is the action item. All in favor?
I have a motion.
Excuse me, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Just a couple of highlights on page one. Item two, in our BE building, we have a significant project. We're doing Phase One as we speak, which is the second floor of BE to completely replace the HVAC system, the air-hand units up there. That's right on schedule. We are scheduled to be fully done with that by the end of July. It's a massive project that we had to relocate faculty and classrooms. And then, once we're done with the second floor, then we'll move to the first floor. So that is, that's going on as we speak. And then I also just wanted to point out to the board, on the bottom of page three, contracts are issued the past few weeks. We issued our contract to the design firm who's doing the required preliminary design work related to the advanced transportation center, which is the capital outlay project. You might recall that while the project has been approved by the state, the funding has not. And so they earmarked the funding, but we have to come back with a design. And so we are on track to have that design, that preliminary design, done into the state by the first week in April. If and when the state then approves the funding related to that, then we'll do the full-blown design work that relates to it, which would be later in the year. And would be at that point, then, that we would come back to the board to request the approval of the funding of the college's share of that project, which was a $4 million project, of which the college would share half that burden with.
Any questions?
I have one. I'm looking at the campus repair and maintenance projects update, page three, the number one SEMCOG non-motorized pathway. It says engineering design work is complete. So could you tell us just a quick synopsis of where we are regarding this?
Absolutely. So we have done our design work. We have submitted it back to SEMCOG. There's been a series of meetings, which we've been represented at by Charles Smith, who was our Director of Design and Construction. There was a meeting about three weeks ago. That CB, that's what he goes by, that CB was at. And so that project is moving along. We are waiting for the design work to be accepted, for the partners to agree to move forward, and then we'll move forward with our part of it.
Okay, great, thank you. I have a meeting, you know, because I'm on that committee, so I have a meeting on March 14th. So at least I want to be updated on that. Thank you very much. Yes.
What has happened to the other two projects that we were introduced to by Damon before he left regarding the entrance to the Student Center Building and the MLB bricks falling on our heads?
We had four major projects that Damon had presented. So we had the ATC project.
Oh, yes.
We had the nursing and the nursing program, the ML renovation and SC renovation. So the ATC is well on its way. Nursing, we've made good progress on the nursing, and that's actually on page three.
Yeah, I see that.
Item three there. We've hired the firm. We're working with Val Graves and her team along with VPI Hearns for the final design work. We're going to have that done by August 1st. So that's well on its way as Phase One. They've outlined a Phase Two and Three as well for that, which would be in ensuing years for that. And so that brings us to the next two, which we are, those are next on deck for CB and I. As to ML, we've gotten critical information from VP Mueller and her team because we, the timing of bringing down portions of this building has to be carefully integrated with what we already have commitments for.
You mean the intentional coming down?
Right.
Not the unintentional?
Sorry about that, yeah. And then the other key part of that project is there was a significant amount of deferred maintenance, which was not in what Damon had presented in the cost of that project, but were in his deferred maintenance. So what I've been doing the last month is working with the facilities team to prioritize all the deferred maintenance projects next year as it relates both to the ML project and the SC project to make sure that when we come back to the board with projects for both ML and SC, that we can also present the related deferred maintenance projects that have to deal with those. So we are doing that work as we speak.
And how is the search going for the facilities weekly? Is that progressing? You don't have to tell me details, but it's moving forward?
It's moving forward.
Okay, fine.
Any other questions? Okay. This is a... I guess we're down to remarks. And this, board, trustees?
Yes.
Just a short thing. I wanted to make note that we had what I thought was a successful series of meetings with legislators in Washington DC to put forward some of the priorities for community colleges in federal budget and the renewal of the Higher Education Act. And I thought we did, it was... I think that all the trustees, I think, had a great positive impact in our meetings with the congresspeople and senators that we met with. So I just wanted to say that I thought it was a valuable trip that we made. Secondly, I'll put an email to the President and Chair of the Board in the board memo, which I really appreciate getting these board memos. They're really great communication and really facilitates understanding what's happening at the college. And I really appreciate them. That there's one item in here as a partnership with, or a relationship with McKinley for a new training program for maintenance professionals. If it might be possible to get a briefing that I could attend with whoever the appropriate people might be of what that's about, I've got a number of questions. I'm very supportive of it. But I'd like to get a deeper understanding of it. And if other trustees are interested, that they could be made available. Or just when the briefing happens, if we could let everybody know. So anybody that has an interest, like I do, that they could be briefed on that.
Sure.
And I'll get an email to you.
Maybe I need to understand what you would like more.
Okay.
But we'll talk.
I've got a list of about eight questions, but it's...
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Hatcher?
I would just like to mention, for the record, the passing of Letitia Bird. Her funeral was Saturday, and I think she'd been honored by the college. Her husband started the construction program here. And she was very supportive of the college. And she will be missed as a vital member of our community. What else? There's a correction in the board memo. It talks about the part-time faculty count, which it says was 561. But that was for one semester, I suppose. But it says the set part-to-full-time ratio is not intact and is set by the college. And it isn't set by the college. It's set by the faculty-college contract sets the ratio of full-time to part-time. And I just wanted that to be clear in the board memo that that's a contractual ratio, not a college policy. And is there anything we can do about the road
Oh, my gosh.
In front of the college? I saw two cars with broken axles in the last week, right there being towed away. And I know it's not our road, but, you know, could we pray about it, or send a memo to somebody? Or, you know, the road commission, send them some chocolate and say we need, it's really, really bad.
There are, I mean, it's just not, not just here, it's every place.
It is everywhere, but it's, I mean, it's, it's really bad for our students.
That was bad. Actually, the fitness center sent out an alert.
Yes.
To everybody saying that if that pothole was so bad, to watch out for it.
As I say, I saw two cars in the last week being towed with twisted axles. It's really ugly.
No, that's really smart. We should probably send something.
Just, yeah.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
The fitness center did send out an alert.
Yeah. And we could send a copy to the road commission, so they could be there.
Yeah, right. No, that's a good idea.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? I just would like to echo what Trustee DeVarty said on our mission, I call it, to DC, to speak with representatives and senators. And it, without a doubt, it was, this year, I think we really struck nerves with people about the, the urgency and the, how important it is for the funding for our students, the Pell Grant, just, I mean, it's just a mirage of different issues that is coming up with the legislation and their bills that's going to impact our schools and our students so badly. But I think that based on what was the information given to them, they were all very, very well receptive. We did have an audience with, through Stephanie, somehow or another, she was able to maneuver for us to meet with, not directly with Betsy DeVos, but her, her associate, I don't remember what he.
Deputy.
Deputy, right. And he was extremely receptive to us. He spoke about things. He listened to us very intently. This is with the Michigan Community College Association, the MCCA, who's all of the, just about all of the 28 community colleges were there. And it was very, very, in my standpoint of view, it was very well received, and he listened to what we had to say. Now, if anything will happen, we don't know, because, you know, but he will transfer that back to her, I'm hoping he will. And to our surprise, Betsy DeVos did come through. She shook everybody's hand. She talked to us briefly, and, you know, it was a delight for some folks. So any case, it was, it was a good, good meetings while we were there. However, as usual, I always have the downside. For me, is being up at six o'clock, 5:30, 6:00, to be at a 7:00, 7:15 breakfast, and every day we have to do something outrageous at, at that time of hour. I don't normally get up before nine, so you know, it was really difficult for me.
The sacrifices we make.
I'm telling you. They forget I'm retired. So, any case, it was well good. I, I appreciate everything. David DeVarty, I will speak briefly about Dave. He did an excellent job in articulating issue to each of the senators and congresspeople about what's going on with, with our funding, and he did an excellent job. And thank you so much. Appreciate that, Dave.
Thank you.
Yep.
I would actually, I want to thank the staff. We did successfully meet with Congressman Bishop, who represents Livingston County, and it's something I've been asking the staff to provide us information with in the hope that we could. And I thought it was a very productive meeting. I think it went really well, and I, I think it'll pay dividends for the college in the future. And thanks to the staff for prepping all that.
I have one more thing that I'd like to say, is I'm piggybacking on what Trustee Hatcher was speaking about, Letitia Byrd. Yes, her husband was very instrumental here at the college, and besides, he was an instructor also. And he did an excellent job. And if you're not sure who he is, go up on the third floor, and his portrait is up there. I did attend her homegoing, and it was outstanding. You don't usually say that, but it was well organized, and down to the T, by, by her sorority affiliations, the links, and the deltas. It was excellent. And then, then from there, the service, or the homegoing was done after that. But the main thing I want to say is that Letitia, you mentioned this, and I was going to say this, and it wasn't in the obituary, and I did bring, bring it to, to notice to the, a person. Letitia has been for years, or had been for years, on the Women's Council, and she did an excellent job. But we also presented her with, was it the Person of the Year? Is that what it's called?
Woman of the Year, I think.
Woman of the Year, from the Women's Council. So she has been a part of us for a long, long time, and she was a person that, she dwelled into her organizations, and it was stated that she had like 30 organizations that she belonged to. That's a lot, but she was organized enough where she knew each place that she was going to with bags lined up, filled with information, and she attended every one of them. So I just wanted to bring that out, because here's someone who's been very supportive of this institution for a long, long time, besides her husband. So that's the end of what I have to say. All right. So we're going to go down to the President's remarks.
Well, I'm going to keep my remarks brief. We have a closed session this evening, and we have some action items. I do just a few comments that I would like to make. One is, I'd like to thank the custodial and maintenance group and facilities, because the winter has been hard, and they've done a really great job, as they always do, in, you know, maintaining our grounds. And I will tell you, I meet with students, Julie and I meet with students, and every time when we ask them, what, what do you like about the college? It's remarkable. They say the facilities is one of their things. I mean, they talk about the teaching and everything, but I've never been anywhere where facilities and grounds comes up so often. So they are doing a great job, Amanda and Bill. And secondly, I'd like to thank Bill Johnson. He's assumed the role of, temporarily, he's helping really assume the role of grounds and overseeing all of Damon's area until we find someone. So he's doing an outstanding job. He could answer all your questions. That was pretty good on the hand sheet. I was holding my breath. I don't know why I would even think I should, but thank you so much, because that's a big job, and I appreciate you doing that. Mardi Gras was quite successful. Thank you very much, Trustee Landau, for being there and your support, and Trustee, Board Chair, what is your name? We're also attending. Thank you so much. And Trustee Milliken was also there. We had 250 guests, and great job. Phil Snyder is here. Thank you. And Rose Bailey, again, did another, a great job. So Phil, thank you for everything you've done, and for a great event that night. We had eight guest chefs. It was a different format this year, and the eight guest chefs also had an opportunity for student internships, which was really, really great. And I would have shown this to you tonight if we didn't have a closed session, but for those of you that attended the Mardi Gras, you did have an opportunity to see them. So I'd like to maybe send them to you. What we did showcase is our, the work of our, of Matt Zacharias and his digital media arts program. The, the digital me, I mean, the profile of three students that were scholarship recipients was amazing, and very touching, and they did an outstanding job. And so I'll send it to everyone, so that you have it. And thank you, just by looking at you, it reminds me, Trustee DeVarty, we did show the one on John Tyler. We took that with us to Washington DC, and that, that showed so much, because he was a student that was a veteran. So he was not only a veteran, but he came here after six years in the military, and, and he was a successful transfer student, so we're, we were, that was great. So thank you. And I know I said I'd keep it brief, so we talked about the summit. I did want to mention, we did have a full, I mean, a first time in a long time, Trustee Hatcher, you'll probably appreciate this, first time in a long time that we had a part-time, a part-time faculty honoring event, right? Would you say a dinner? And so what I really like, I just want to tell you that Vice President Hearns and the deans are doing a remarkable job in working with our part-time faculty, and involving them in professional development, recognizing their work. And so that's really very good, because when we talked about earlier succession planning and how important that is, I just want you to know they're doing a great job. You do know, I hope you know, and probably celebrated this when you saw your paper, OTR, that we were, we were recognized by Affordable Colleges Online as one of the best online community colleges in 2018, ratings number one in the state, and number 46 among the top 50 in the nation. So that's not too bad. So that's really good. So thank you to Pete Basili, again, all the faculty that work online, and the support staff that makes it work. Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Pastor Jerry Hatter from Brown Chapel AME Church in Ypsilanti. The church recognized me, and I'd like to thank, that's not me, that's Brandon Tucker. I would like to thank Brandon for accepting the award, and thank you so much, Brandon. You're an outstanding, I'm honored that you would do that for me. But I received the award for many years of experience in higher ed and my leadership role as the President of the college. So thank you. And that's, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. That sounds good. We're going down to Old Business, that'd be tab E. And we have Vice President Johnson, Technology Services Contract Award. This is the action item.
Great. This is, we have a few last, at last meeting, the proposal to bring in Campus Works to award a two-year contract for an amount not, not to exceed 1, 1.6 million. The principal role of this contract is to do significant capacity building of an excellent IT team that we have, but we really need to bring it to the next level. And we don't know of a better way to be able to do that than to invest in our team through the help of, of this, this contract and, and the services. We would be bringing in full-time a CIO, and also a Chief Information Security Officer, as well as about 800 hours, up to 800 hours of subject matter expert time, that would include a significant upgrade we need to do to our new, our banner system, to do a number of security initiatives, to create a project management office, to do change management process across IAT, and a number of other areas that are going to really allow our staff to further develop their skills and better serve the, the college. And so we are making the recommendation for this contract.
Any questions?
I move we accept this recommendation and award this contract.
Move second. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Chair Bethany Gordon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to tab F, Contract Extension of Power Wellness. Vice President Johnson.
Great, thank you. Last meeting, we, we presented an update to the board on the performance of the fitness center and the critical role that Power Wellness plays. We're asking the board to consider a, a renewal of that contract for a three-year term with an additional three-year con, contract extension. The terms of the contract are essentially the same. To remind the board that Power Wellness, they manage the center under our guidance, and that we maintain the facilities. We meet monthly with Power Wellness. We have two meetings monthly. We have one on the financial and the operational side. There's a separate meeting where they meet with facilities team each, each month. And then we also have a number of other committees to which, for instance, that Val, that Val Greaves and Ben Hunt-Holz, we, we think they have done an outstanding job in supporting the college and may, in making this just an outstanding community resource.
Do I hear a motion?
I move we accept the proposal.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I read in there that obviously the, for probably a number of reasons, their membership had declined. But then also too, I saw that they are, are, not so much contemplating, but propose to reduce their membership fee. And I was wondering, since they're managed by your guidance, is there a reason why they felt they need to reduce their membership fee? Is that to recapture the members who had left? Is that because to, and then also to attract new people, new, new members? And is their membership cost, as it was, comparable to the other fitness centers around?
So a couple, couple things. As to the center as a whole, we are at an all-time high of total membership. And that's been largely in the community membership side. In fact, if you were to, to ask the Director of the Fitness Center from Power Wellness, Dawn Lyons, she'd say she probably at this time of year couldn't fit another person in the center during peak, peak, peak times. And that's been tremendous. That really speaks volumes. The area that we have had a decline, it hasn't been significant, but it is a decline, is in the student side. And so the board last, last year, when we had presented, had asked some great questions around what is it that we can do? Do you, do you understand why students are not coming as often? And are there things that we can do about that to help to engage? And so we've done a few things. We've done a number of surveys, which helped us to understand kind of the voice of the student. And loud and clear, the, the voice was, we love the center. The biggest issue of, of decline that, that we saw is around, of course, we offer a half-a-credit course, PEA course, and it's getting the students to be engaged, to persist through that course. And so actually, that Dean Val Greaves, along with Dawn Lyons, have really worked hard to engage students, to get them to persist. So we hope we're, we're going to be able to turn that around more.
Okay.
So that's, that's been good. But the other thing that, that we did hear loud and clear with some students, not a lot, but some, is that costs could be a little lower. We, we know that our, that our center will never compete on price point with Planet Fitness, for instance. We offer a lot more service than that. So our membership dues for students today is $43 per month if you're not going through the course. So what, 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 what we actually, was our recommendation, not Power Wellness, is that we, this next year, drop that by 10% down.
And that's across the board for student and non-student?
Not just students.
Just students only?
Students, students only.
Oh, okay.
No, the, no, the, the community member price is priced well for, 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 for members. But for students, we want to draw, draw, drop it by that 10%. We're really going to promote that and, and see if that won't resonate with that handful of students. Most students thought it was price fair, but some said, you know what? It's difficult for me. If there's anything that you can do, we would really appreciate that. So we took that proactive step and said, for next year, we want to drop that membership rate for students by 10%.
Okay. So now, was that already written, that it identified that it was just a student population? Because if it was, then I overlooked it, and I apologize for asking a question that was already in.
The student population is, is the area where we've seen decline. The, the broader, broader community members, we've seen strong growth.
Okay. All right, well, that's good.
Yes.
I strongly support this, and I'm really happy to see that you're reaching out to students with that price drop to help it for the students that have difficulty. And hopefully we'll see a boost in membership from students. Just a couple of questions. What is net promoter score?
That is, that is a score that, that's used across fitness centers across the nation, is that they, you bring in an outside firm to survey the members. And so it basically is a measure of the strength that a member would recommend the center. So that's what meant, that's what it meant by the net promoter score.
Is that a good number?
It is a good number. It's, we, we, we would like it to be a little bit higher, but, but to be higher, we would have to make the center bigger, we would have to expand the services, and we probably have to reduce the number of members that we have, so that everybody felt like it was their own personal center, so.
And I'm assuming the secret shops score is like, you have a secret shopper come in?
That's right.
And then they, they evaluate the staffing and how the responsiveness of staff to questions and things.
Yeah.
I think that just shows a great, that's a very positive score. Yeah.
I have a question. This is just off the cuff, and I-
This is just off the cuff, and I thought about this when I was reading it, so you could
say no. Does this, does our fitness center, is it utilized by other companies?
It is, actually. That's one, one of the areas of, of growth. It's been a number of areas, but one of the areas was, we asked Power Wellness to go reach out to employers in the area and to start to build a relationship with those employers for their employees. And so they tie it in to their healthy living programs that they have, that they tie to their medical, their medical benefits. And so they want to provide some avenues for their employees to engage, to be able to improve their health and lower the cost of their medical insurance. And so Power Wellness has been doing that with a number of employers in the area. And we've, that's one of the areas where we've seen growth.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope, I'm done.
I do have one. Just help me out a little bit. So, we still use our facility's maintenance people to manage the, the Power Wellness center.
To manage the building, the building systems. Yep, so, so we have two. We have two full-time staff that are located at the center. And then we have staff that rotate and are on-call for after-hours and on weekends as well.
What about the interior?
The, the custodial side is managed by Power Wellness. So the, the, the daily cleaning is managed by their team.
Okay, so if anything breaks down, is it Power Wellness or is it us?
If it's the equipment, it's Power Wellness. By the equipment, I mean the fitness equipment. Except for things like pools. So anything that's structural is college responsibility. If it's fitness equipment, it's Power Wellness responsibility.
So like a, like a railing, a hand railing?
That would be college.
That would be us?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I kind of thought that, but then I forgot. We have moved and seconded this. This is a action item?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, excuse me.
Chair McQuaid Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're going to tab G, and this is the BEB Fan Terminal Unit Project Acoustical Ceiling and Partition Change Order. Okay. VP Johnson?
Great. When we had first bid, bid this out, it was below board threshold of a hundred thousand per capital projects. And when we got into it, we, we just saw that where we needed to replace the entire ceiling, not just the sections that were affected, where we needed to gain access to really finish off the ceiling. So we, we asked, are asking the board to approve a contract amendment by forty-four thousand, which brings us above the hundred thousand threshold in total.
What happens if we say no?
Well, if you say no, then we will. We'll have to be creative.
I move we approve this contract change order.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I have none.
Roll call, please.
Chair McQuaid Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Alrighty. We're going down to external, oh, excuse me, appointment of external audit firm, and that is VP Johnson again.
Great. We had reviewed with the board of the results of the bid process, in, you know, and just, just to, to remind the board, it included trustee Milliken from our board, as well as a board representative Doug Weber from the foundation, along with certain college and foundation representatives. We had three or four bids. There were two that we looked at very carefully, Raymond, the incumbent, and Plant, and Plant Moran. Our preference always would be to, at a certain point, to bring in a new auditor. That, that would be our preference. That would be kind of our going-in bias, actually. In this, in this case, Raymond was just if not stra, 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 stronger than Plant Moran in terms of the strength of their higher education client base. And that's really important to, to Doug, to WCC. And they have strong representation in Lansing. And that's really important as well. And I would say that they're equal on that point with, with Plant, Plant Moran. They have served the college very well and they are about, per their bids, about eight thousand per year, or fif, or fifteen percent lower than what Plant Moran came in with. So we posed the question to the committee of, is it worth to, to get a change in firm in getting that fresh perspective? Is it worth the extra eight or nine thousand a year? And the committee unanimously said no. That the recommendation of the committee to our board was that we stay with, with the incumbent for those reasons.
But we did ask to change the management team, right?
The, the partners, so they, yep, the partners offered as part, part of it, so Michelle Fowler, who the board has seen offered, that if that was important to ro, to rotate. The recommendation from Lynn Grace, our controller, and, and myself, is that we take them up on that offer after this next year, and for one reason. If you might recall, there's a brand-new Gatsby that's coming down by Gatsby seventy-five, which is the Post and Plaiming Benefit Plan. That's a very significant undertaking. And we, we, we would recommend that we keep Michelle for one year, so that we can transition through this big, this big adoption of this new accounting standard. And then we would certainly think it would be right for us to rotate partners.
Well, thank you for giving us that extra information, because I did forget about the Gatsby. We're not hearing about it that much, so it's interesting you bring it up. Thank you. Okay. Is there support?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Just further discussion? Yes.
I was one, I wasn't here at the January meeting, which I apologize for, but I was one of the people that was really thought that it's important and kind of our fiduciary responsibility to kind of rotate this, so we don't just end up with the same firm maybe making a mistake and remaking the same mistake. And so I'd like to see us really emphasize that as a, as a point to look at in the scoring system next time. I was prepared to vote against this just for that reason, and the fact this is a three-year Given the administration and your recognition of this issue and the willingness of the contractor to rotate a new auditor team in here, I, I'm going to vote for this reluctantly. But I, I do respect your, your sensibility about this and your attention to that concern.
Any other? Yes?
Yeah, I'm, I came prepared not to vote for it either, partly because this idea of rotating the auditor team isn't part of the proposal I'm voting for. And I wish it were, because then I would be much more confident about doing this, about voting for this, so.
It will be part of the minutes. Does that help?
It does.
I mean, I'm just, we'll make sure we follow through.
It will be part of the minutes?
Well, I made a comment to that effect, certainly.
Well, no. Well, sometimes it's just that you made a comment, not what you commented on.
Right.
That'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that it happens.
I'm sorry, but I'm okay.
Okay. All right. Then we will do a.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Chair McQuaid Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
We're going down to tab J.
No.
Tab I, Recommendation for New Programs, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second. Move this and second it. Well, let me see here. This is Vice President Hearns. Did you have anything to say?
Not unless you all have any questions.
All right. Any discussion?
Just, next time, not just reviewed by a regular assessment, but approved by a regular assessment? Okay? I mean, they could have reviewed it and said it was awful.
We'll change that.
Thank you.
Nothing would come here that was not approved and went through the whole curriculum.
I want to make sure, that's true. Thank you.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Okay. J. So we're, oh, here I am here. Sorry, marked off. I lost my spot here. So we're down to tab J. And this is Recommendation to Discontinue a Program in twenty eighteen, nineteen. And there again, Vice President Hearns, any, have anything?
We talked about it already, yeah.
So moved.
Seconds. Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're down to tab K. I will need to, we're just.
Well, we're asking the board to change the twenty eighteen schedule.
We need to revise the.
That you approved.
What you approved before for our twenty eighteen schedule of board meetings. And particularly, it is the Establish and Hold is Annual Spring Retreat on March ninth, two thousand eighteen, at one o'clock. So I would need to have a motion.
So moved.
Support. And supported. Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
We'll need to have a roll call.
I have one question.
Yes.
How long does the meeting run, the retreat? It says start at one.
It will, well, dinner's at seven.
So basically, we set aside from one through, till nine?
From one to nine.
And this is, and in the past, we've done two-day retreats. This is just one day only?
Well, right, it's one day because we've started earlier. We're starting at one o'clock. We have three topics. You want me to talk about?
Okay, that's, it's fine. I just need those little housekeeping details.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair McQuaid Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're at tab L, and this is just a discussion on Parking Structure Repairs Project. Vice President Johnson?
Thank you. Our, our, our beautiful parking structure is now entering the phase of needing maintenance. And so like any good, good project, and Damon Flowers did an amazing job of being proactive. And so he actually had brought in a firm last April to start to do this assessment. And the results of that assessment said that here are some areas that we need to, to focus on. Expansion joints, some con, some concrete re, repair at all. So I apologize for the lateness. We just got the bids done last Friday, so I went to President Blonk and asked if it would be possible for us to ask the board to include it on, on the agenda today. And timing is, we have kind of a narrow window. We want to be, we want to start the work right after we're done with the winter semester. And we need to have it all done before our trade partners come on campus, starting in July. So we have kind of a narrow window that we would, in essence, shut down the deck for about two months' time and have this firm come in and do all this work. We had a number of bids come in on it, and we're making a recommendation that you award a contract within, with industrial services for about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Which parking, oh, I'm sorry.
Parking structure.
Parking structure.
Yeah. We only have one. We only one? Oh, my bad. Never mind.
I'd like to.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, since this is on for discussion, I, I've served on the Downtown Development Authority in Ann Arbor for eighteen years. And when I got on, the parking structures were falling apart. And now they're in very good shape and really provide a lot of parking. And I know the parking structure here is an important component of providing parking for the campus. I think we need to be proactive with the maintenance, because if we put it off, it gets much more expensive to put any, the damage just escalates. And I would like to move that we vote on this tonight in order to facilitate this happening as quickly as possible. If that's, unless there's any opposition on the board, I'd like to move to put it on, on for vote. Any opposition? I'd like to move that we approve the awarding of the contract to what I see as the lowest bidder on this contract, and the amount of approximately a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, as stated in this document.
Support.
Are you asking us to do that?
Well, he's putting it out on the, on the floor.
No, I'm just asking if.
It would be good if you did.
It certainly would, would be very much appreciated.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, if you wanted us to do that.
Thank you.
Doing all in favor on the.
All in favor? Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
No, we just, that's just to get the.
Oh, to get it on.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call.
Now we need a roll.
Now we need a roll call on the motion.
We need a roll call on the motion.
Chair McQuaid Morton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Secretary Davis?
Yes.
Trustee DeBarty?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I do have a question. My question is, in your choosing this, this vendor, campus parking structure, what is their background experience in working with parking structures? Because you're, you're looking at a contract award of a hundred and forty-one thousand, say a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. I'm looking at, we're talking about replacing the flooring and some other items, which is going to have to be with concrete. Do they have a very good background in doing this work?
They certainly do, yep. They're one of the qualified bidders, which meant that they needed to meet those specifications around working on similar projects, including parking structures.
So we, we won't see, because this, ours, the last time this was completed was twenty twelve. So roughly, you know, a few years down the road here, five years. So in five years, we have to do this again, basically?
You know, this is really meant to extend, stand the life of the, of the structure, as trustee DeVar, DeVar said. So I, I can't answer the question as to what the normal cycle, cycle is safe, for instance, for expansion joints. What I can say is that there, that we are addressing what needs to be done now. I, I know that once we get on this schedule, periodically, we'll have, have to do repairs in other areas in the structure. The key is to be proactive about it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay. Thank you very much. See, no more tabs, no more items?
We have to go into closed session.
Move to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining issues.
She knows that. Give her a chance.
Someone's chomping at the bit here. I would like to make, get a motion so that we can go into.
I move we go into closed session.
It's been moved and seconded, so we can go in closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.